Good morning, welcome to the October 21st regular session of the Board of Supervisors meeting. Roll call please, Michelle Walton.
Brandt.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Kurttenbach.
Here.
Leyland.
Here.
Hall.
Here. Please join in the moment of silence to reflect on this morning's actions. Please stand if you're able and join for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item one, agenda received as proposed or amended.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item two, public comments, this is a time for the meeting for anyone to speak on an item that is not listed on today's agenda, either in rumor or online.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Roger White, 2303 Greenwood Avenue, Cedar Falls, an active cyclist, member of Cedar Valley Trails Partnership, and Cedar Valley Bicycle Collective boards. Today I want to publicly thank the Board of Supervisors for allocating ARPA and other funds to Black Hawk County Conservation, which enabled that board and staff to complete major projects on the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. These include replacing or repairing three additional bridges, paving the remaining unpaved portion of the trail, and applying an asphalt overlay on some of the original segments of the trail that we're wearing out. Altogether, these projects constitute big improvements to the Cedar Valley Nature Trail that will increase its use and the enjoyment of that trail many times over. Black Hawk County Conservation considers Cedar Valley Nature Trail as a linear park, and that is an accurate description of the recreational opportunities the trail provides county residents, and outside of county residents also for that matter. Cedar Valley Nature Trail is part of the local Cedar Valley Trail Network, which contributes an estimated $25 million in economic impact to Black Hawk County according to new economic analysis. That's a significant contribution to our local businesses and economy. These trail improvements also support the Black Hawk County Supervisor's strategic plan to improve physical and mental health. A few sections of the trail still need cracks fixed or an overlay with new asphalt. However, I understand there may be additional bridges that need repair first before the overlay can be done. For me and other trail advocates, I know fixing the two mile section between Wyden Road and Gilbert Pill would be a pri- or should be a priority. This improvement would encourage additional trail use. Cedar Valley Trails Partnership is the local friends of the trail nonprofit organization, and has made donations in the past in order to help repair or improve the trail, and we pledge to continue fundraising for future trail projects. Thank you.
Thank you for all your efforts too.
Yes, absolutely.
To join in.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak on an item that is not on this morning's agenda? If you're none, we'll move to item three, claims to payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue payments against the various settlements of such claims. So moved. Second. Sweet.
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is $1,257,782.07. That includes $4,065.80 from the share of 6040 Fund, and it also includes a total of 900, or I'm sorry, $870,990.57 in ARPA projects, primarily improvements at the Courthouse and Pinecrest, and also the jail HBAC. Everything appears to be in order. Questions today?
All right, we've got a motion, second. Roll call please.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes. I therefore receive project updates from the partners heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board, Kathy Nicholas, engineer. Our crews are preparing the gravel roads in particular for colder temperatures. We do have all the plow assemblies on the front of the dump trucks, and we do have two individuals who are cleaning ditches. We do that frequently in the fall. And then lastly, I wanted to mention that we do have, I do have three public meetings this week. The Ford City is this evening, Wash Burdies tomorrow evening, and then Hudson Public Library is on Thursday evening to inform residents, rural residents about the local option scales tax, proposed changes to that. Local option scales tax. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Kath, we just, on the bills repayment was almost $100,000 for road rock on that. Was some of that more for some of the bridge? I know there was extra rock brought in for when they did the bridge repair in Mount Vernon. Is that part of that, or?
Yeah. Those are probably rock that hasn't been placed recently in the last month, for example. There was some spot rock placed at the Mount Vernon Road, at the roadway road bridge. Once we got that open, that requires extra rock. We have, I told our blade operators that if they see, in order to prepare the roads for winter, get the crown reestablished, it is oftentimes necessary to add extra rock, so that is pretty common this time of year to just be placing spot rock, meaning that the entire mile is being re-racked. It might just be 100 feet that needs it to the potables or re-establishing that crown. So, yeah, just various places throughout the county. Thank you.
Good morning, Gabby DeWitt, marketing coordinator. I just wanted to remind people about the food drive that's going on. The bins are located at Pinecrest, there's two at Pinecrest on fifth floor and fourth floor, and then one in the micro market here, so they're in secured staff areas. It is a public event as well, so there is a chance that people would bring in public donations, but in a couple of years that public health has participated, they've gotten very few public donations, it's mostly internal. So there's poster and signage down there by the micro market for that, but it's going, started Monday and go through November 2nd, and slight competition with the area medical providers, Mercy One, Unity Points, and Valley Medical Specialists. We get our points based on the weight of food we bring. But, yeah, it'll be, it says November 2nd, that's a Sunday, so we'll be collecting donations through the 31st. Can I answer any questions? Okay.
All right. We'll move on to item five, minutes approved for the October 14th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item six, consent agenda. The item listed below will be acted upon by a single resolution without separate discussion unless someone from the board or the public requests that a specific item be considered. So moved.
Second.
This is a resolution, roll call please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes. Item seven A, resolution that the suspended, suspension requested by Judy Langham of taxes owed for 2025-26 installments in the amount of $1,340.00 for parcel 8913-36-129-009, located at 1648 Birch Avenue in Waterloo, Iowa, be approved pursuant to subsection 427.8 of the Code of Iowa, and the county treasurer be authorized and directed to adjust her records.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion of questions? Roll call please.
Leyland.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes. Item seven B, resolution that the suspension requested by Jason McGee on taxes owed for 2025-26 installments in the amount of $4,464.00 for parcel number 8913-35-406-018, located at 2217 West 8th Street in Waterloo, be approved pursuant to subsection 427.8 of the Code of Iowa, and the county treasurer be authorized and directed to adjust her records.
So moved. Second.
Call please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes. Item seven C, resolution that the tax sales certificate assignment for lot parcel 8913-36-228-005, certificate 2007-001-239, owner Maxine Scott located in Waterloo, Iowa pursuant to subsection 446.31 of the Code of Iowa be approved, and said certificate of purchase of tax sale be, excuse me, be assigned to Gloria Boring as presented by Linda Hensman, the county treasurer.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I had just one question. Is there, Linda, is there a house on this lot? And if so, is it currently occupied by Maxine Scott?
The house next to her.
Good morning, Chris, Linda Hensman. No, there is not a house located on this property lot.
Okay, thank you.
She lives next door to the lot she's.
She does, yes. She owns several parcels within that area.
Thank you. This is a resolution, roll call please.
Leyland.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes. Item seven D, resolution of a compromise offered in the amount of $500.00 by Gloria Boring for the taxes owed on parcel 8913-36-228-005, located in Waterloo, Iowa, be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Brandt.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes. Item seven E, motion that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Karen Showalter, county auditor, be approved and direct the chair to sign per se to purchase copier, printer, Ricoh IR 4000 for $4,926.00 to be used by the auditor's office.
So moved.
Second.
This was a part of our five-year capital plan, so it was budgeted for. It was budgeted at $6,500.00, so we're coming under budget for this item. I'd like to say that one again.
Uh, this is a motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion unanimously carries. Item seven F, resolution of the lowest responsible bid received by Odin Enterprises of Waukegan, Nebraska, letting held October 14th, 2025 to 9/5 for project L-3011, steel materials for Oxley Road Bridge with a total bid of $20,815.60 with a county engineer estimate of $18,000. Be awarded and direct the chair to sign resolution authorizing the county engineer to sign the contract and to receive, replace, or file the contractor's bond. Certificate of insurance is recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county. So moved.
Second.
Hi, good morning again, Board. So we opened bids last week, and we did just receive the one bid from Odin. Odin Enterprises, I would recommend that you, we accept this bid and I'd be allowed to sign the contract. Just to give you a little bit of background about this, this is steel so that our bridge group can start building the bridge beams for this small bridge. We are replacing Oxley Road Bridge next summer, plan to be next summer. This way our, our bridge group can get started probably by the end of November, building the bridge beams when they are not plowing snow or doing other activities. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Go ahead, did you have one? My question just was, is there a reason why we were off on the estimate? Over a couple of days in there.
I don't have a good answer for that. Our engineer estimate was $20,008,00, excuse me, it was $18,000. I think Ryan looked at last year's, when we purchased steel for, for bridge construction last year, and we just estimated it based on 100 pounds and that type of thing, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what we, what we crafted that budget, we weren't considering now tariffs either.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were talking.
Be my assumption.
Sure.
That's probably what I was asking.
Yeah.
You should say a chance it was tariff issues or cost of steel.
We don't really know without speaking to Odin why, why their costs had increased. We did budget in our five-year plan, we put on an estimate for the cost of the bridges. So the total bridge to replace Oxley Road Bridge, we budgeted $150,000. That's what it is in our five-year plan. Did you have a question?
Not anymore. No, I was gonna ask, like, what the dimensions were. Like, how long are the beams and how many beams, just out of curiosity? It doesn't matter, I'm just wondering.
This is either a 30-foot-long structure or 40-foot-long. I don't know for sure, those are, we build 30, 35, and 40 with our bridge group.
Okay.
So it's one of those three lengths. Again, it's probably six beams. We will be coming back and asking you for. This bridge is a little bit different, it has very shallow, um, rock is very close to the surface compared to many of our other structures. We are working with a structural engineer to come up with how we're going to design, how they are going to design the piers for us, the abutments, excuse me. We will be ordering more steel once we have that design done. But right now, the beams are pretty standard, we're just waiting on some more advice and specifics about the abutments, and then we'll be coming back to you with another contract for more steel to get that work done.
Thank you.
Roll call please.
Brandt.
Yes.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes. Item seven G, resolution to direct the county engineer to undertake steps to purchase a used diesel hammer and leads using procedures that apply with the purchasing policy, any amount not to exceed $90,000.
So moved. Second.
Hi, good morning again, Board. So I sent you some information in email. This was part of our capital request for FY26 for approximately, for $100,000. This has been a multi-component purchase, and this would complete the purchase, actually buying the diesel hammer and the leads for this, this capital item. Earlier, several months ago, we were able to purchase a longer room, which is for the crane itself, and that is so it can, these leads will need it along the room for the crane. Can I answer any questions?
Roll call please.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Yes. Item seven H, motion that the travel request submitted by Captain Gabby DeWitt, marketing coordinator, be approved and direct the chair to sign per se in the amount of $1,275.00 to attend this certified public communicator winter session at Texas Christian University, Fort Worth, Texas, scheduled January 9th and 10th, 2026. So moved.
Second.
I'm just here to answer any questions. It's a two-day session Friday morning into Saturday.
Another Texas trip.
What's that?
Another Texas trip.
Yeah, hoping, I think last year they did end up canceling because of ICE, and so that is a risk, but, but just a really great schedule. I can't remember if I sent you the agenda, but I can send you the agenda if you want some good learning, but also some good time to work on our outlines for our strategic communications plans.
If you could send the agenda.
Sure, we'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Uh, this is a motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
You're good, thank you.
Item eight, work, this work session, discussion of Consolidated Communications Center. Have you heard anything?
The questions have been sent off to the attorney, and we're waiting for response.
I did talk with, with, sorry. Looking at doing, Judy submitted her budget, and so would like to do that meeting Thursday, November 13th. That works.
13th at what time?
Uh, 2:00 PM.
And there were only like the five questions, I don't expect to, I guess, take two.
Yeah, well, ideally there's a, there's a resolution there, if not, we'll still need to pass the budget.
Oh, yeah, and she said that it probably wouldn't change anyways.
Yeah. Very good. All right, anything else for the board?
I was gonna just comment that the EMA, at the EMA meeting, we did sign a letter of intent regarding kind of continuing with looking at the Duane Arnold's host county kind of ask of us regarding the Google, well, we don't know for sure the Google project, but the projects down there that are going on. And Mike had reviewed the letter of intent for us and kind of given us, okay, that that was probably the best way for us to kind of proceed while we collect more information. Mindy's online or not, but we said at that meeting, it probably, we still thought it maybe, it sounded like from the group, that it would be good to have a presentation from them, and so that everybody have the opportunity to ask questions if they wanted to. Especially for us, I said, rather than have just one person sort of on the EMA board, to have all of us have the same information and see how comfortable we were and what we wanted to ask. And at that time, maybe we'd invite the others, the mayors and others too, or anybody that wanted to come to that meeting and be public, but to actually sit in, listen, learn, and then have the same information before we commit. I said, work on a date for that in the future.
So we understand there's dollars of the, being a host for Duane Arnold that the EMA will receive just being a host annually. There's a large amount upfront. As years go, we may need to be looking at a larger facility, or that's in the plans as well for holding some of that equipment and stuff that's needed in case there's an accident or emergency out of Duane Arnold.
I think, I think though the group was looking at a building earlier and considering some type of structure, maybe to house things that we had for EMA or whatever too, but knowing that we have that possibility too, I think that was probably what got Mindy's attention. With the funding that comes along with this type of a project, that you could utilize some of that to put toward a building or something else that was needed, so. That is, one of the questions I'd had early on was the fact that Johnson County had been a host county, and we're no longer going to continue to do that. And when having conversations with them, it was just to make sure you're taking care of your community and making sure that you're treated equitably for what the costs are going to be involved. So that was just why Mike was involved with looking at some of those expenses and things for us too. So Mindy forwarded some information to us, we can certainly forward it, what she did to the EMA group, so I'll be sure everybody gets that as well. More to come.
I did, in the next couple of weeks, I wanted to sort of gauge interest, I guess, of asking our action planning committees to just come and just sort of give us an update. Doesn't have to be final presentation, just give us an update of, of what folks are working towards. Not, not heavy homework, I feel like in the next, not even looking at next week, two, three, four weeks from now, if folks have time to get some stuff together, but.
I'm the HR director, so, no, I think that would be good. We, all of us have been, the champions have been meeting the other other week, and our teams are all at least met once, if not working towards our second and third meeting. But we've been talking about, yeah, that timeline as to, you know, how does this line up with potentially budget requests, things like that, so. We have a meeting actually right up at 11:00 AM, so that's Caitlin, Emmerich, Kathy Nicholas, Brad Metcalf, myself, and Gabby, so I'll mention that, and we'll talk about getting that set up for maybe next month.
Yeah, yeah, sometime in November, it could be, yeah. Just a, just a quick touch base, yeah, ahead of budget. And then everyone's gonna get their action timing, likely not on the exact same week, and so.
Not, not have all of them on the same week, maybe have like.
I think the final plan, I think we could do five-minute
Updates.
Updates, all in one meeting, but recognizing that everyone's work pace, and each committee is moving through theirs at a different pace, that's likely gonna come staggered, but I think an update is, a one, during one meeting in November would be which is helpful.
All right, that sounds good, we'll look at our calendars and, uh, give it a couple of dates out to you guys.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it, thanks.
Uh, November 4th is out of notice. Talk with Julie Davis with the Eastern Eye Disabilities Alliance is gonna be coming to do a presentation here for our meeting. That's a November 4th meeting.
And before we, Karen asked us about the canvas and doing it on, we need to do it on the 12th, and we needed to decide also if we were going to do a meeting on Monday or Wednesday of that week because of the veterans holiday. And I assume that means maybe more reason to do it on Wednesday rather than to try to have two. We'd have to do a meeting on Monday if we wanted to, and then Wednesday. No, no, for the canvas, yeah, she has to do the canvas on 12th, so she said it could be a part of a meeting if we met then. And I thought we need to determine whether we want to meet anyway, so.
That would be a agenda item for action though.
I mean, oh, you mean that we have to make an initial? Yeah, we can actually take action on that, but I mean, we need to make that decision. If we look at calendars and think what day we should do it, we can just make that.
I would nominate the 12th. I may be a jury duty, so. I mean, if you're attentive.
If I can. Press the 12th work?
Yes, it does.
All right. All right, well, we seem we're putting that on next week's agenda to put the, move that meeting that would have been on predawn's day to November 12th.
At night.
At night. Followed by the canvas.
All right, I was just gonna add one thing.
Yeah.
Uh, October 14th, so it was part of the radio committee for dispatch. So we met over at the jail and got the, I guess, the initial conversation going with Raycom. So Linda, you would have been here at the time this was all dealt with in 2015-ish.
Radio system.
Yeah, so the, with the lifespan, those portables and mobile radios and all the equipment that goes with that. They're trying to just get ahead of things right now and start planning for replacement, and there's gonna be a price tag that will come with that, so. This is FYI, they went back and now they'll be meeting with the respective boards to figure out next steps, but yeah, it's gonna be expensive. So how did that go last time? It was, imagine, it was bonded for levy set based on the bond amount, and so I don't know how that's going to impact our five-year capital plan or anything. With our debt service levy, but I expect that's going to.
Clearly impacted, I don't, I haven't calculated estimates from Jake.
No, I know, I know.
So I can't really estimate what that would be.
We are still able though, through Iowa Code to bond for radios, I know there was some adjustments.
Emergency communication equipment is specifically allowed, fortunately.
They have even an estimate on time to know some of that information, so we would have it before, oh, Nate or whoever wants to speak to it.
Yeah, Nate, take it.
So, yeah, we're, Nate, that's Black Hawk County Sheriff. So we're roughly eight to 10 years into it, doing what they anticipate would be a 10 to 12-year lifecycle, so we're trying to get a little bit ahead of it so we're not fully behind. They gave us a couple of different options, and I'm not sure how that works with the financing part of it. Obviously, we pay an annual maintenance fee on it, so when you combine the annual maintenance, if we're to pay all upfront with everything, that we needed to, radios, the upgrades on the towers, everything, you're looking at almost $20 million for something that's gonna last about 10 years.
That was, you mean the initial?
What's that?
You don't mean the upgrade would be 29?
For the new radios, for the upgrade, for the maintenance package, for everything in there would be about $20 million. They will do a 10-year, almost a financing package essentially, that would start off at 1.7 million the first year and go up progressively each year, but then. year, but then over the course of time it comes out to about the $20 million. So they're gonna present us with a couple of different options on that and we're, they told us that they went high on it to begin with, so hopefully we can scale that back down and anything, but, uh.
Yeah, I think they like that.
But just to throw the, throw the sticker shock out there, that's what it's looking at, which is.
That's a way big sticker shock.
Which is more than what the actual, somebody constructed the towers and everything was the first time.
They went high with that one as well and thought it would be 15 million, so we were thrilled when it was only nine.
Well, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Late, not yet, yes.
Yeah.
But yeah, so this is looking at a 10-year investment of $20 million, give or take. So, uh, so kinda.
We're going to need to know that.
That was, so we've got a subcommittee working on that. At next month's actual 911 meeting, we'll actually discuss a little bit further with all of our board members there and then at that point we'll probably bring something a little more concrete back. But unfortunately, they, and they got us, obviously, that radios, public safety, throughout the county, whether it's police, fire, sheriff's office, whatever it is, doesn't exist. So, yeah, that's, we, we all had sticker shock ourselves when they, they came at us with it.
I thought Reggie's eyebrows were about to pop off his head.
I was having to live over it too.
Yeah, it's, it's insane seeing how much that stuff costs, so.
I, near this point, I would like to see financing documents.
Yeah, and we'll get all that, like I said, I, I wouldn't have brought up this since Justin threw it out here after you, like, I throw that in a branch and.
Honestly, I'm throwing it back. I, yeah, I was, I were rejecting it.
Yeah, so it is.
I know they're selling something, but generally governments get lower interest rates than what they can get, so. And I'm, I don't know, there's a whole, to me, there's a lot of legal questions about what oversight can even enter into a site. It, to me, it's not much different than bonds, so there's just some groups we need to go with here.
Oh, absolutely. This is, like I said, we're.
Yeah, getting a little sticker shock.
Yes, getting a little sticker shock, but we're still talking, I'll play one to two years till anything has to be done, but, um, again, we wanted to kind of get ahead of it. We didn't want to wait two years then, come here saying everything is failing and we're.
Do we recycle those or is it, when you, when you replace, you just replace the wholesale?
As, as they fail throughout, we do recycle some, but for the most part, it's one big lump each time. And that's where, they've never done the, the financing, rent to own, whatever you wanna call it. Um, so they guarantee us 10 years on it. Um, so like the dispatch consoles right now, I know from what they were talking, have, they actually can't get replacement parts on those now. So they're kind of mixing and matching and fortunately there's more consoles downstairs than what they're typically using. So if it comes to where they can't get ones from the warehouse or from wherever else that been made, they can start, worst case scenario, dismantling an unused console and putting it in with the others. So we're not in a dire situation where I need this by July first or we're, we're done, but we're definitely at a point where we have to start looking at it.
Well, I knew something was gonna be needed and it was coming, but that's quite a bit more than what I was thinking it might be. Um, is, and I can ask this at the consolidated budget here as well, but are they doing a five-year capital outlook like we're asking the markets here to do?
Uh, is Judy on? She's gonna know better than what I get, so.
I'll ask that, but it just, it would help if we would have known this was gonna be this extent, the number.
Yeah, well, like I said, I, we were not expecting it to be that high, which some of that is the maintenance fee, which is about, let's say, $400,000 a year of that, give or take, so.
Is that, is that what we pay now? We're still paying, we're still paying the maintenance fee now.
Yeah, we're paying the maintenance fee now to several hundred thousand a year. Cause I think, I think portion of that is almost a half million, I think, actually.
Yeah, that was like 480 something.
Yeah, so, right. And then what I think it's a, whatever, three to 5% increase each year. So when you're talking half a million dollars, 5% increase, is that a, like, a thing?
Is Radio Shack still around?
The old system sounds better.
Some Dixie cups and a lot of string.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Michelle, with, with the debt service levy, I could, we can talk about it afterwards too, but does that just get divided out by the number of taxable parcels in the county?
It's based on dollars, so it's based on the property value that we have.
Yeah.
So each parcel pays their share in the ratio that that taxable value is to the total taxable amount.
Okay. Thanks for bearing that, that news name.
Thanks for that, Justin.
Well, and sooner better than later.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other portion of the board?
Yeah, this is Chris. We recently had the 20th anniversary celebration of the Dry Run Creek Watershed. Um, it was really well attended and just kind of remarkable milestone of 20 years now of both of water quality and flood mitigation efforts. And this is, um, the Dry Run Creek is part of the Middle Cedar River Watershed Management Authority, which we, um, serve on as representation. Uh, but it was great. County Conservation was there, uh, with a really great, um, booth as well. Uh, they had a very friendly rat snake that was very popular. Not popular enough for me to touch it, but it was, it was, it was a good time.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, that's it, Chris. Uh, Chris, what's the scoop with, uh, the waste management stuff?
Um, we, yeah, we, we've got a meeting, um, this Thursday and I'll send, uh, an email update about anything that comes out of that meeting, but there's, um, nothing's moving very fast on any big changes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. This time we'll move to a closed session. Uh, this is a resolution to proceed in the closed session for discussion of information concerning physical and or critical infrastructure, security, security procedures, and emergency preparedness. Where disclosure could reasonably be expected to jeopardize how you operate.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call to go into closed session?
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Curtinback?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes. Justin, do we need, yeah, we'll, we'll take a little while.
Set her down.
Set her down, then.
Yep.
Or maybe later.
I wasn't gonna call today.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn the board supervisors' closed session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Item 11, uh, do we have a resolution to proceed in the closed session for discussion of strategy with council in matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of a governmental body in that litigation. So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Curtinback?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes. You have a motion to adjourn the board of supervisors' meeting of closed session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Item 12, discussion of possible board action. I don't know if that ended at this point. So I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.